Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, April 3rd Board of Alderman Meeting. The first order of business is the minutes of the previous meeting which were emailed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. It has been seconded to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So moving on to opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. If you're a member of the public, I ask that you wait to be called on to speak, and when you're called, walk to the podium and speak into the microphone so that Peg TV can capture your audio for the live broadcast of the meeting. We have any members of the public here to speak? Susan Schreidman and Paul Gallo here to speak on the Creek Path.
I'm Susan Schreidman. I'm the local project manager for Rutland Creek Path.
And I'm Paul Gallo, volunteer for the last 15 years on this project.
More. I think it's been more. We just want to do a brief update for you newcomers and as well as the people who've been around have heard over and over, let you know where we are with this. This project began at least 15 years ago. I think it was more like closer to 20, but in any case, it was a creative economy initiative and a real community project that's been driven by volunteers. We've written grants. We've got in-kind match as well as cash match that didn't burden the city taxpayers at all. And we've divided the path, if you see in your handout, into five segments. Segment one, from Giorgetti to State Street, is constructed. Segment two goes from State to West Street, and that's constructed. Segment four is the most recently constructed segment that goes from Meadow Street Park to River Street Bridge and to Door Drive Bridge, really, to River Street, and then down a sidewalk. And we're in the process of working on segment three, so Paul's going to give you an update on where we are with that.
All right. So we have a good amount of funding for the project for segment three. We went out to bid in November, found that our, the bid process was incorrect, so we're going back out to bid. We're in that bid process right now. The bids are due next week. We did actually restructure the bridge itself. We know that's the big piece, you know, a $600,000 or $700,000 piece. So we're anxious to see how these bids come in. I think we're in good shape. We've allowed the, to be relatively open in construction process. We're allowing it to go into 2024 to take advantage of the contractors that are bidding on this. They like to see that. So they can take advantage of the shoulder months, be it November and December of '23 and March and April of '24. So it's really exciting. This segment that we're talking about takes us from West Street at the Bridge of East Creek. It goes west along the fenced, green fenced-in chain link fence, 400 feet, and then it makes, it crosses the street and follows the Green Mountain Power right away. It's fenced in at the time. It'll be open, and we're going to shoot right across East Creek onto Meadow Street Park. We'll border East Creek all the way down to where we are currently built on segment four. So that will get us Giorgetti Park, Northwest School, Meadow Street Park, the, and then down, we're hoping to go to St. Joe's. So that's further down the road. So we just wanted to give you an update. You'll hear more next week when the bids come in, but we think we're in pretty good shape.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Any questions from anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on tonight's agenda? Jack.
It's a new board. It's an old request. I think because there's a new board, it's appropriate. The request is that the Board of Alderman schedule a public hearing at which the Commissioner of Public Works explain to the community why he fluoridates the city water supply. We've, we had a review in October of 2022 conducted by the Public Works Committee, heard from both sides, the Public Health Department, the dentists, and we opponents. It turned out that the review was somewhat moot because a legal opinion from the city attorney determined that the decision was really in the hands of Commissioner Rotundo. And he was someone we did not hear from during, during that review of fluoridation. I, I think you've gotten in your mailbox a letter from me listing, I think, four questions that, that I think need to be answered by, for the citizens of Rutland. I have a, another handout. Some of you have, have already seen it, but it's kind of a quick summary of the case against I also want to offer my services, if you will, as a resource. If, if any of you have questions that you, you want to ask of me, I will, I will answer or be available in person, by email, over the phone, whatever. Doing a little research, I, in the Rutland Herald Archives, I realized that in 1970, I was a reporter for the Rutland Herald, and I wrote a series of articles on fluoridation. So I've been involved with this issue for more than 50 years. So if some of you are getting tired of hearing from me on the subject, I'm ready to move on myself. But I can't let this particular issue go because I feel that Rutland is being harmed by this policy. Not only is there the ethical question of medicating a public water supply, but the evidence continues to mount that fluoride is harmful to a portion of the population. Just recently, a couple of weeks ago, there, you may have seen some publicity, the National Toxicology Program reported on a study of fluoride's neurotoxicity. So the National Toxicology Program is the nation's expert on toxic chemicals. And the report, which, which is a draft report, not yet final, confirmed that fluoride has the ability to reduce childhood IQ to infants and fetuses who may be overexposed to it. The report is significant in itself, but it's also a key element in a trial underway, federal court trial underway in San Francisco. There's going to be a hearing in about a week on this trial. The trial, the bulk of the trial was held in 2020. It is now reaching, we hope, a conclusion. The trial seeks to force the EPA to end, to forbid fluoridation of water supplies. We opponents feel that we have a very good case. The judge seems to be very careful in making sure all the relevant evidence is in, in the trial. And this final study, this study by the National Toxicology Program, it was a key piece of evidence that he was waiting on. So basically, that's, that's the renewal of my request for a hearing by the Public Works Commissioner. Thank you.
So just to point a clarification, the issue of fluoridation sits in Public Works right now. Are you asking that the Chair of that committee hold a meeting, or are you asking for a, something distinct, a public hearing?
I'm asking for a public hearing to get the Commissioner to present his reasons for fluoridating the water supply, which, under the city attorney's opinion, he is the, the person in charge, and he is one we, we really haven't heard from yet.
So Attorney Blumer, what would distinguish a public hearing from a committee meeting?
Well, Jack may be able to tell us better. I mean, I, I think if you're, if there's going to be any action that comes out of it, the committee meeting would be the better forum.
Okay.
I don't know that it matters necessarily to Jack as long as Commissioner Rotundo is in attendance and the public can attend as well. But he, he could explain if he sees a distinction or prefers one or the other.
The question is what?
So if there were an action that were going to come out of the meeting, it would need to be a committee meeting? But if it were just to discuss the matter and have no action come out of it, it could be a public hearing. Did you have a preference in terms of what you were seeking from the board?
Well, I would hope the committee would, you know, at least consider acting on what came out at, at the hearing.
Okay. So it's already been referred to Public Works, so it's up to the, the Chair of Public Works to call that meeting now?
Well, I would hope the board would express some specifics, that, that the Commissioner would be on hand, and the, the meeting would be centered around him presenting his reasons for fluoridating the water supply.
So I would absolutely encourage you to contact Alderman Gillum, the Chair of Public Works, and request that he hold that meeting and that he invite Commissioner Rotundo to attend.
Is it possible to get an expression from the board as to whether they think that's a good idea? Direct?
It's already been referred, but I, I need a motion before I could have discussion.
I think, I think this is a new, I mean, the matter was referred to Public Works, I think, back in 2022. The, you know, the review was held, there was no action taken. To me, this is, this is sort of a new, a new issue in a way.
So I'm pretty new sitting in this seat, so I'm going to call on Attorney Blumer again. Because this has been referred to committee and sits in committee, we can't discuss it right now, correct?
Well, the, the board sort of has the option to override the previous referral, so if it preferred to tee it up in a different way, that would be an option tonight. But yes, as a matter of the order of business, if, if a matter has been referred, then typically it sits with the committee until a report comes out or until it's otherwise disposed of. But again, the, the body has the ability to take it back from the committee. Really, the body can determine what it wants to do with this particular issue. And for what it's worth, the, the board rules also allow the body to compel a committee meeting. If that works, pleasure as well.
Alderman McCann.
I have a question. Is the intent to have the Commissioner at a forum just to improve the information available to the public, or are you trying to get information from the Commissioner so that actions can be taken?
I think both. I mean, I would hope that his answers would point the way toward action, which I hope will be to end fluoridation.
The reason I ask is I, if I may, I've seen elsewhere, you know, water utilities present report cards annually, and they describe sort of the work that they do. I don't know that I've seen that here, but that might be something that we could do as a way to inform the consumers of the way their water is managed. And then if more people are informed and would like to join your rally and cry to force the city to do something else, or encourage the city to do something else, that might help your cause without necessarily kind of spinning wheels here. Not, not a motion or anything, but something that you want.
Very good. Alderman Hooker.
Thank you. Just a question regarding whether or not a committee can compel a witness to, to come in and testify. It seems that one of the problems is that we haven't heard from the Commissioner in the past with regard to why the water is fluoridated. And I guess my question is, if there is a hearing held, can the Commissioner be compelled to attend that meeting?
Without having done a ton of legal research, I would say that the Commissioner is an employee of the, of the city and the board has the ability to, I mean, not compel them in a criminal manner, but certainly if he were not to, not to appear upon request, I think he would be subject to disapproval.
Alderman Coopley.
Thank you. Does this become a, an issue on the ballot come next March or, so we would need signatures to put that on?
Unless we choose to put it on.
Unless we choose to do it.
Yeah.
Just confirm my suspicions.
Correct. Gillum?
Well, there's really no motion on the floors. I should not be talking, but to put my two cents into this, the predecessor chair has already done the work and had the meeting. Both sides set, stated their case, okay? His, his next step should be to the taxpayer, the people who are actually using the water, for a decision like we did, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago. And he needs to get 500 signatures to get it on the ballot. That will solve the problem one way or the other.
That's right.
Put it back to the people who actually use the water.
I would like to speak to that.
So it doesn't seem like there's a strong appetite from this board to do anything other than has been done in the past, which is to leave it in the Public Works Committee.
I would like to speak to his point if it's possible.
As a closing comment, yes, because we do have a very full agenda tonight.
Rutland has voted on this seven times, three times in favor, four times against. There is no justifiable reason why the public as a whole should vote to medicate everyone's water supply. It's unethical on its face. You don't have a public vote on saying, well, everyone should go to church, or everyone should treat their children in such a way. It's beyond, I mean, it, it's a nice escape for elected officials to put it onto a public vote, but there is no justifiable reason to put medicine in the water supply based on popular opinion, which over the years has gone back and forth. Rutland's been discussing this since 1951. Going back in the Herald Archives, you'll find, you'll find the, the articles. Once, once there were two votes in favor of it in '82 and '83, then the program was implemented in '84. But it, it shouldn't be up to a public vote.
I understand where you're coming from. There just doesn't seem to be movement from the, the board to do anything with the issue right now, so, so we will have to move on to other items. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on tonight's agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Good evening. I thought I was going to have a short update. It's not as short as I thought, so bear with me, but it should be good. So as you, as you remember my format from last time, I'm going to talk about what we have done, kind of things that have closed out or moved on to, to, in a working mode, what we're actively doing, and then what we're going to do next. So I'm starting with the what we've done. We started work on a digitization strategy. So what that kind of means is what the citizen-facing piece from a digital standpoint of what, you know, the city of Rutland looks like to them. So today, if you want to apply for a business license, if you want to apply for a certain type of permit, that's a paperwork process in the city of Rutland for a majority of those things. There's only a few things that you can digitally ask for today. And some of those things that we digitally asked for today are actually already in our new software. So I'm going to talk about that for a second. So GovPilot is essentially the city's operating system. GovPilot is a piece of software that you're going to hear about from Administrator Strensti in a little bit, in a little bit here. The guys are saying hi. You're going to hear from Andrew here in a little bit to discuss expanding that digital footprint and how we offer accessibility to citizens in Rutland. So people that maybe want to apply for a permit digitally, or maybe want to interact with the city in other ways that we don't offer today. So you're going to hear from that in a little bit, but think about the benefit that this is going to have across the board to the citizen, but also internally. So DPW, Police Department, Fire, Building and Zoning, Clerk's Office, and the Treasurer are all part of some of these permit processes. And instead of someone having to stand outside their door with permit in hand for a special event permit, for example, waiting for that permit to be processed manually at that time, they'll be able to apply for it. The messages will go out to everybody, get approved, and come back, and then we'll get that final approval on the board. So that ease of process isn't just for the citizens, it actually eases things in the city. That's more time back to everybody's, on everybody's desks in their departments and a better way for them to work with the systems. On that note, speaking of a government-based OS, GovOS is launched. This is a solution that allows us to register and track our short-term rentals in Rutland. There have been 10 units that have already registered, and of those 10 units, and the ones that continue to grow, we'll be able to actually track the rooms tax that would go along with those units as well. We've worked on a budget review. Mary and I had a good, long hour and a half session figuring out the right way to find the funds that I need appropriately to not increase the tax, the burden on the taxpayer while still getting to execute on the plan that I want to put in place for additional headcount. So I think we found a way to do that, and in the coming weeks, you're going to hear a little bit more from me on that piece as well. I met with Mary Ashcroft from Rutland Town. We discussed how the two municipalities can work together on certain things. We both deal with similar challenges. It's, it's not unique when you cross the Rutland City into the Rutland Town border. We're all dealing with the same challenges. We all have the, actually the same benefits because we're in the same region. So we're going to continue that discussion. You know, we have the intermunicipal board for the Board of Alderman. That's going to be a big piece of it. And having those communications and conversations about what happens between our two towns, we got that ball rolling, which is great. So what are we actively doing? Evaluating city services and contracts. I mentioned this last week. Sarah Margot, our purchasing person, has actually collected a lot of data. We've already found some things that we can get really efficient on. I've started reviewing that, and we'll be looking into doing more of that. And most of it is in the telco space, so whether it's our cellphone plans or our digital connectivity, we can really consolidate that throughout all our departments without anybody losing quality of service. Also connected with Ian Sullivan. So I'm going to talk about this one for a minute. Ian is our state's attorney. He's in charge of the massive backlog of cases in our county. There used to be over 2,500 cases in backlog. They're down to 1,800 cases. I just want to kind of applaud that for a second. His, him and his team in Rutland, in Rutland, they're right here in the Ace of Blumer building, have been working to process as many of these cases as quickly as possible. A lot, what a lot of people don't know is the judicial system in Vermont has just, in October, switched from COVID mode to back to standard mode. So a lot of that process has been done in the short term, but there's still a big backlog. So what we need to do as a city is support that process for them, but also make sure that we're continuing to message what's important to us from a priority standpoint. And Chief and I have talked about some of those things as well. Also, a legislative mandate to transition to new regional dispatch model has been put out quite some time ago. Chief and I had a good conversation about that this week and what the role of the PD will be. Was that something that we need to look to develop a, an organization in the community to take that on? Do we take that on? What's that look like? It's a long discussion. It's being discussed up in Montpelier in a committee up there, but we need to keep our finger on the pulse there, so those things will be open. And you'll probably get a referral at some point to a committee to discuss that on the board. I met with Barbara at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We talked about this last time. There are two grants. The first one is the Municipal Energy Resilience Program Grant, and the second one is the EECBG Grant, which is the Energy Efficiency, Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. The first grant, I misspoke last time. It's, the first grant is not $250,000, it's $500,000. The second grant is $75,000. So both of those grants, we are eligible for, and I do believe we need to apply and work on that process. So with that, I would like to refer these two grant matters to the Environmental Sustainability Committee with the board's approval.
So we have a request from the mayor to refer discussion of these two grants to the Environmental Sustainability Committee? Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved. Second.
All right. So we have a motion to refer, and it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. And I can get you more information on that as, as we move forward. The Ad-Hoc Housing Committee has also met, and we've discovered some interesting funding opportunities that could be available for Rutland City. In order to access these funding sources, quantifiable data reflecting our current housing status and our future needs must be obtained, right? So we can't access these funds unless we have the data to show that we need them. In order to do this, in the fact that this directly reflects and impacts the largest, I would say, one of the largest needs, or the largest need in Rutland City to date, which is housing, as additional funding would have a direct positive result in housing growth and expansion, I would like to commit $5,000 from my contingency fund to pay for this housing study. I would also like to ask that the board recommend their support for this matter and a motion as well this evening.
So can you clarify what the motion you're asking for?
So I'm committing $5,000 from my contingency fund, but I would also like the board's support. So I'd like the board to support the, the $5,000 to go towards a housing study for Rutland City.
All right. Alderman McCann.
Question. So what would the result of this study be? What, what are the numbers that we would hope to see?
So what we're hoping to see, so when we can look, it's going to look at and evaluate where we're at today. So if you talk to landlords today, if you talk to the Housing Trust or the Housing Authority, they all say we have no vacancy and there's a two-year waiting list. That's great, but that's very qualitative, it's not quantitative. So it's going to evaluate where we're at now and also say if, if you're, you meet your plans and goals, or even if you just look at what the, so if we didn't even predict future growth, right? It's going to say you need this many units. You need 1,200 units in Rutland in the next five years. If we predict that future growth, it's going to say, okay, you need 1,800 units, 2,400 units. So what we should get out of this housing study is a number of units that the city will require to continue appropriately housing people as we move forward. Does that answer the question?
Will it get to those units that are not currently on the market, that could be on the market if they were used?
This, the study will be able to determine units that are offline, but it won't distinguish from an offline renovation and most likely than a new unit. It's just we need a unit here. And it is not a unit used.
Alderman Hooker.
Thank you. And this $5,000 that you're willing to appropriate from your contingency fund will cover the cost of it?
That will, yeah, it's up to $5,000. So it should be less than $5,000. Yep.
Alderman Gillum?
Who actually does the work?
I believe, Lyle, do you remember who the, Heather, do you remember who the?
Vermont Housing and Climate Agency will do a housing needs assessment light. That's why it's a little bit on the cheap end for us. This isn't the full housing needs assessment that we've had before. We need something kind of quickly, so we might expand this perhaps later.
Thank you, Heather.
So what you're doing, you're taking an inventory, am I correct, and make it simple for people at home?
Yeah.
Of what we have and then what we need.
Taking an inventory of what we have.
Other agencies that are in place now.
Yes, and then estimating out what we'll need. Absolutely. That's correct.
Does that also include the property owners who are in place right now? They need to help to improve what they have so they can rent the property.
So this document, they would be able to use if they are applying for grants or additional funding. additional funding or going to the bank to say there will be growth? Yes, and we can make that document available once we talk with them.
Alderman Savage?
So I would make a motion to support Mayor Dungus using $5,000 from his contingencies fund to do a housing assessment study.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded, to support Mayor Dungus spending $5,000 from his contingency fund on a housing study. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Great questions, by the way. Okay, so what we're doing next and what we're going to start some work on. So with the hotel program ending soon, it's supposed to phase out in two steps, right? The end of May and the end of June. I've started having meetings in regards to having a plan, connecting those who will be exiting the program with services that they need. Although they have accesses, access to these services today, a targeted, targeted effort, especially for this transition, is necessary, and an action plan must be put in place. So I started having those conversations. I connected with our Project Vision New Executive Director, Adam Senek, who's also a state resource for us from the Department of Children and Families. And I'll also be connecting, hopefully in the next week, with Commander Proudery to discuss my plan as well. I'll get more into the details of what that looks like, but I believe that offering those services to people is going to help them transition out of these housing and send them next phase. City Master Plan, I reached out to Devin Neary to discuss beginning the process on the new city master plan. We need to understand a couple of things. We need to understand the cost, the process itself, the workflow of building it, and the time it's going to take to do that. So we're just in the early stages of having that conversation. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission will help us get started on those first steps, and then we'll see what their involvement will be along the way. So I'm going to hand out a, give you all a handout here. Give me two seconds, Bill, if you don't mind circulating this.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into that, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When we, when these facilities close down, and I'm very much involved because I've been in the housing provisions with certain levels.
Yep.
It's very important, this is just a comment, it's very important, we just don't dump them out. We need to do wraparound services to move them out and up.
That's right.
So they become viable in the community. We just can't move them from one place to the other, which has been happening in the neighborhoods right now.
Exactly right.
So there needs to be a full court press.
And that's what this will, plan will entail. Thank you very much for that comment. That's a very good highlight of what we're trying to do. Alderman Gillen? Okay, so what we're handing out right now is a really kind of an interesting result of a conversation that was had here at City Hall about a year ago. So about a year ago, a woman by the name of Lee Khan asked Alderman Talbot, Devin Neary, myself, and Mayor at the time, to come in and sit down to have a conversation about a grant that is coming from the Federal Department of Transportation called the RAISE Grant, R-A-I-S-E. That grant was awarded to the Chittenden County Planning Commission earlier this year, and we have in turn been awarded $100,000 to work on the transportation, I mean, I want to make sure I get this right, $100,000 will be made available to Rutland over FY24 and FY25 to pay for consultants to create a TOD master plan and draft municipal bylaws and development regulations to implement that master plan. That's halfway down on your document. So the, the transportation-oriented development, this is around everything you can think of transportation, right? Bikes and trains and busing and all this stuff. So this is a, a way for us to evaluate our community, look at where the gaps are in transportation, put the needs in front of engineers and planners, and really focus on growing our, our accessibility and our mobility within our city. So this is very early stages. There's a lot to be discussed here. This will eventually get referenced to committee, but I don't want to put the work on the Board of Aldermen yet. I want to start understanding what our role is going to be in these discussions, work with the Planning Commission, work with Andrew, our city planner, to try to find the best path forward before I bring it back to you. But I did want to make you aware, I did just get this letter, as you can see, at the end of last week, so thought I'd brought that, bring that up to you. Okay, and then the last thing, I'm going to just.
Do we have a question from Alderman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Not that long ago, I believe the Board approved $7,500 in matching funds to a $75,000 grant to do a bike ped master plan. How does this relate to that?
So this is completely separate from that. Yeah, this is separate from that bike ped master plan right now. They could come together, the result of the bike ped could come in to play here with the transportation planning pieces, but they're two different things.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Okay, any other questions? All right, all right, one more thing. So, oh, well, two, well, one and a half more things. Okay, three more things, but anyway. So let's talk about a, a change that we're making here in City Hall. So I'm going to make a, a small change in DPW here. It's a big change, but it's a, it's a small change. We have a lot that DPW has been doing in the past few years, and one of the biggest things that we need in the coming future is a real focus on the projects and engineering in, in our city, for, for the next few years at least. So we have three bonds passed this year. We have $7 million from the federal government through the state to work on projects here in the city. Jim's put together some fantastic project plans for us, but we need those things to be administered. Jim, over the last two years, has, have used his skills both in that capacity and in the capacity of DPW Commissioner to restructure the department and get things working like a pretty well-oiled machine in DPW. I've actually asked Jim to take a, a shift in what he's doing and focus on these projects. I want to leverage his skills and what he's done so well in the, in the, in the portfolio that he's built to really drive home these infrastructure changes in our city in the next two or three years. And the goal here is, is to move quickly and efficiently as we do that. So therefore, Jim will remain chief engineer. He's going to take on special projects, and we've tied that to the three bonds and the $7 million, as I said. I'll be appointing a new DPW Commissioner in the coming future, and in the meantime, and then that'll allow Jim to focus on those things. And in the meantime, Jim has graciously said that he'll continue as DPW Commissioner until that appointment is made. So is there any questions on that? Great, all right, so with that, with that, I am going to hand out the current appointments. So right now, I have three appointments that I would ask you to review and table as custom, as is our custom, until the next Board of Aldermen meeting.
So for the new members of the Board, what will happen is, as the mayor makes the nominations, we'll table them until the next meeting.
So someone will just need to make the motion to table.
I would entertain a motion to table the nomination.
Second.
Have a motion that has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, okay, now really the last thing, I promise. So I have a, an ask for a request for proposal to go out. So this, we're not spending any money yet. We're just trying to evaluate the cost of essentially an environmental assessment of the 10 Cleveland Avenue property. So that, to some of you, would be known as the Lynda Lee Building or the building with the Ukraine flag mural painted on it right now.
Or maybe it's called something else.
So, so the reason that we need to do this amongst many, the, the main reason is, is we, in order to understand what's going on at that site and leverage that information for our TIF district, and I'll explain how we're going to leverage it in a minute, we need to understand what needs to be done. So this isn't, we're going to clean up the site. This is a, I want to evaluate what's going on at that site so we can then go out, we or a potential vendor, you know, developer can go out and say, hey, here's the problems with the site that we need to clean up. Tell me how much it's going to cost to do that. So that's what this process is. In order for us to, if we wanted to leverage that as part of our TIF district so that we would take care of those things, we need that evaluation now so we can go into the TIF plan. So that's what this ask is. I know it's on your agenda, so I'm asking, again, to approve, for the Board to approve a request for proposal process for environmental assessments needs for the 10 Cleveland Avenue site.
Alderman Toddio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to authorize the mayor to invite proposals for professional services related to environmental site assessments at 10 Cleveland Avenue.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great, and that's it for me. Any questions?
Did you want to read the names of the nominations?
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea. So for zoning administrator, we have Andrew Strinste, building inspector, Mark Sederski, 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 I'm going to get it. I call him Mark, I call him Andrew. I don't, I have a tough last name, so they're giving me a little grace, but if I do this another month later, they're going to kick my butt. Recreation Superintendent Kim Peters. Those are the three that I put forth tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, additions and deletions to the agenda. We have one addition, a special events permit from same son of Vermont for an electrifying afternoon. I would entertain a motion to add this to the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion to add it. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then we'll move the request from Chief Kilcullen for an executive session to the end of the agenda. Any additional additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request regarding funds this Board previously designated for a Rutland Business Plan Competition to be administered by the RRA, and there's a memo in your packet regarding this item.
Thank you. So the RRA met with Lyle and Scott at our meeting and came to the conclusion that they would like to recommend that the Board of Aldermen reallocate the $125,000 in ARPA funds to start up Rutland Business Investment Fund with a member of the RRA to serve as part of the selection team.
All right, any questions for Barbara? Alderman McCann? So the, where the funds, the funds were previously allocated, is there any risk of them having been obligated to somebody and not yet paid out, or is the money just been sitting waiting to be used?
The money has just been sitting waiting to be used.
Okay, great.
And do I understand that this money will be used to leverage more money?
That's correct. It'll be used for immediate need and then leveraged to build capital fund.
All right, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Toddio?
And I'll make a motion to reallocate the $125,000 in ARPA funds to start up Rutland Business Incentive, Investment Fund with the RRA serving as part of the selection team.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. Next, Barbara will present a resolution of support for the RRA's application on behalf of the city, together with Summit Properties, for a VCDP grant, and there are memo and additional documents in your packet.
So I have provided you a resolution to circulate for signature tonight in support of applying for the grant that we had the public hearing for earlier today, which is the rehab of 22 affordable rental homes at Hospital Heights, which is located at 101 Mahoney Avenue. And I just want to add that VCDP grants are extremely competitive. There are no guarantees, but that Andy and I plan to write the most competitive application that we can. And I also, I don't know if it was included in your packet, but the required letter of support from the Regional Planning Commission has been received.
It's in there.
Move to suspend the rules?
We have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Was that a second?
Second then, yep.
Been seconded?
I can't hear her up there, so she needs a screen.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to put forth for circulation the resolution?
Resolution.
To apply for the grant.
VCDP.
Thank you, VCP.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and circulate for signatures the resolution in support of the application for the VCDP implementation grant, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate?
Just so people know what we're doing, we're just applying, authorizing to apply. There's no money being spent yet.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyle, did you want to add something?
Trying to keep up here. I want to thank you for the $125,000 for the Business Investment Fund. Our intent is, Scott and I, my intent is to go out and get more money as part of that, and you already know, because you did it before, thank you very much, when you provided us with money for the hub co-works, that allowed us to go out and match that. And when other organizations or businesses see that the municipality is very interested in supporting a project, they get even more support. So thank you very much for that. You just hopefully made our job a whole lot easier to get more money, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Barbara. Next, we have Chief Lovett, who's seeking a one-year extension for a contract to provide airport rescue and firefighting services at Southern Vermont Regional Airport, and there's a memo and additional documents in your packet.
Yes, you're, as, as you were saying, to extend our existing contract for one year. In the contract that we currently have, we have the ability to have two one-year extensions voted on each year. The State has asked us if we would be interested in picking up one more year. Would certainly save a lot of time on my part and Attorney Blumer's part to ratify that extension. We have enough money in the existing contract to cover at least one more year and even potentially farther out, but do it for one year and see where we're standing. And so I'm looking for permission to sign the contract again.
Alderman McCann? Question for you, so in the original contract, it includes personnel rates of $125 per hour for the first $1,250, and then $85 per hour for the next, or many. Those rates were set in 2021. There's been a lot of inflation and cost changes. Are those rates still kind of sufficient to cover our staff?
They are actually, even if we were to drop down to the $85 an hour, but I don't think we'll get that far.
Great, thank you. So then I would move that we authorize. Well, suspend the rules? Oh, right, then, yeah, I'll move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that catch. So then I would move that we authorize Fire Chief Lovett on behalf of the city of Rutland to approve and sign Amendment Number One to Contract PS0873 for aircraft rescue and firefighting services as presented to the Board.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Alderman Gillen?
Just a comment, so people will know what we're doing here.[1650.88] Just a comment, so people will know what we're doing here. This is for the Department of Transportation for the regional airport. Our fire department covers the fire protection for the airport. This is just a renewal of the contract.
Anything additional? So we have a motion. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And then, I think you have another item, right?
Yes. This is basically signing off on our local emergency management plan. Our LEMP is something that routinely is re-signed up on May 1st. And just because of the situation with the board and the school vacation and stuff, I thought it was more appropriate to bring it to the board tonight. There are two differences in this document from the one we had prior, and actually, an adjustment to the one I sent out last week. We've added Alderman McCann's email address and a couple more telephone numbers have been changed. It is a dynamic document, so as people call us with changes, we typically update them, but we only bring it to the board at ratification time. The difference in this contract versus, or this plan versus what we had last year is we now have a DPW mutual aid agreement that's included in the plan. And what this would allow us to do is if during times of emergency, if we needed help from an adjoining community, or if they needed our help, it sets into place a contract, basically, very similar to what we have for the fire service, where we can send our DPW out to help them with maybe a piece of equipment we have. It would be fully refunded. It talks about how we were, we would be getting refunded and so on and so forth. Had Attorney Blumer go through the contract, and is there anything you'd like to speak to on that, or?
No, I mean, I think we identified a few areas that might need some clarification, but it's a, an agreement that a lot of the other towns in the county have already signed. So I think it's kind of a heavy lift at this point to negotiate those clarifications, but the thought is that there's no, nothing that's too problematic, and we would probably just give those comments to the Planning Commission and kind of let them decide when to do a refresh of that document. I don't know if anyone has... Bill, were you able to send them the document, or have they?
Yeah, it was actually embedded in the document.
Okay. So, yeah, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, but the review was fine, other than just a couple areas where I would have, I guess I was probably more nitpicky than maybe other folks.
All right, Alderwoman Hooker?
And this is the first time that we're having this agreement with surrounding towns?
For the Department of Public Works. It was something that I sat on a committee about five years ago, and we created, and it went through two legal teams, the Vermont Leagues, the city and towns, and the document was produced, and other towns signed on to it. We had not at the time, and talking to Commissioner Rotundo, it seemed like this was a good time to jump on to it. So I suppose, right now, I'm looking for permission for the mayor and myself to be able to sign the LEMP and submit it to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Do I entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to allow the fire chief and the mayor to sign the new emergency management agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
And adopt the National Incident Management System?
Yes.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. All right, next, we have Recreation Superintendent Peters with a request for an RFP for engineering work for a walking path at Goddick Adult Center as part of the Ursa Grant, and a memo was forwarded to you via email.
Thank you. So the memo goes through a quick project for those of you who have not, that are new to the board. The Ursa Grant was awarded to, to the City of Rutland, specifically Recreation Department, for a walking path ADA compliant behind Goddick Adult Center. I did put a visual on your desk that just shows what that's going to look like. We hope to start in the next six months. So with that, asking for the approval to send out an RFP for engineering of the walking path. After, with the engineering, then that will allow us to have our maintenance team do the, we're basically becoming the, what's the right word? We're the contractor. We're doing the work to, for the walking path. So it's just for the engineering.
Alderman Gilliam?
Move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Alderwoman Toddio?
A motion to authorize Kim Peters to send out an RFP for the Goddick Adult Walking Path.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the request for RFP for engineering of walking path at Goddick Adult Center, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McCann?
A question or clarification, and then a question. So it looks like on the image that there is still a connection to, is that Temple Street on the backside of it?
Mm-hmm.
There any possibility of including a crosswalk back there to get from the sidewalk on the other side of the street to this walking path, or is that a complete, separate?
It would be separate, but I think it also wouldn't be our department that would be looking at that. So I think, yeah. I think that would be a good idea for after it's complete.
Okay, thanks. Alderman, Barbara Gallow?
Kim, is this going to be strictly a daytime walking path, or will it be lighted?
So I'll let Tyler just talk briefly about what we're doing underneath to allow the lighting to come eventually. So just real quick on the project.
Sure. So in the installation of the path, we are going to put in the infrastructure for electrical. Right now, that wasn't a part of the initial grant that was applied for, but while we have the ground pulled up, we will put in conduit to accept, I believe that was what pedestal lighting in out there, along with some seats. So it'll probably be like a phase two of this project, you know, once it's complete. But it'll be an easy tie-in later on down the road. Thank you.
Alderwoman Hooker?
Kim, the bulk of the cost, though, is being covered by the award that we've received.
Everything, correct.
Everything is being covered.
Yep.
That's good news, no mess.
We received, just another with that, we, we applied the city for two Ursa grants. Typically, you don't do that, but we did, we were awarded both. The other was for Pine Hill Park, which is already underway and should be finished in the next two months.
All right, we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, and I think you had some additional updates?
Some updates. This is the fun stuff that I like to talk about. So I did send out, I just, some paper, some pictures of what happened on Saturday. We were really lucky to be able to host the third through sixth grade state youth Vermont wrestling tournament, which we, of course, had wrestlers in, in the program. We had 229 athletes, which then led to about 1,200 people coming to watch the, the meet. The pro, we, we did use this as a fundraiser for our wrestling program and also the rec center. And we, I was selling concessions all day. And what was interesting, as people would come up, I would have conversations, where are you from? Did you stay the night? So we started those conversations, and I would say, out of the 50-some people that I talked to that were from out of town, more, I don't mean out of town, but Burlington area, Berry, St. John's Berry, they did stay the night, the night before. So there, when we move forward with this, we need to put together a little bit better way to collect that data, because after they leave, they leave, and they're not gonna, parents are gonna come back. But it was interesting, the hotels that they told me they were staying at are the Airbnbs. I wanted to put a really huge thanks out to a couple local businesses that helped make this happen. Gil's Deli donated sandwiches for the event. Cara Mia's, we went through 62 pies that day. Joan's Donuts did, everything was donated to us for the morning session. McDonald's did all of the coffee. Walmart did all of the, I call it pop, you call it soda. And Seltzer's, the Henry Cog did some water for the event, some bottled water. Casella, we ended up, we knew when we got the final numbers on Friday morning, the amount of athletes we were gonna have. I reached out to Casella, who now owns the rest of the, the college property that we, we have two other parking lots, reached out to John Casella. He was more than happy to let us utilize that. So it was a very short walk for, for people to come to the event, and we definitely needed that, that extra parking. And then all of our community members that brought in Gatorade, baked goods, in order to have a successful fundraiser. That's really it for that. We just had La Valley's Business Show, which also was, was packed. That was hugely successful. We were really happy to host that and hope to do that in the future. That went really, really well. And then we have the upcoming on April 11th. Make sure you stop by the rec center, because that's the Cedar Business Show. So definitely hope that we see some Board of Alderman walking through, through that. We always have our AAU tournaments. We have another one this weekend, and we're looking at a couple other rentals. We are starting to market that a little bit more with, with taking pictures and putting it out there. So that's it for the, just some quick updates. We are eight weeks till summer for us, and so we are really gearing up to what that looks like. Maintenance crews started spring cleaning today, so you may have seen them out and about, getting into our parks. And then the last thing, I just want to thank Mayor Dungus for the reappointment. Unfortunately, I will not be here the day of the voting, because I'm traveling, because it is spring break that week. The mayor has said that's okay, that, so I, but I do want to apologize, I'm not just skipping out, but I will be. We had already planned a trip that week. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Superintendent Peters? Alderwoman Toddio?
No, I just want to thank you for your work for the community.
Thank you.
Really impressed by everything that you do, and our community is definitely a better place because of all, all of the rec departments.
Yeah, it is. And you're right, it's the rec, and it's our community. You know, we don't do a lot of fundraising, so me asking was an easy ask. So, yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, just quick.
Alderman Cooper?
Yes?
AAU basketball.
Yep.
Does that bring in additional funds?
Yep, yep.
Runs through the summer.
Say that again?
Runs all through the summer.
All summer, yes. So we have, the way that we do our AAU, we, in order to not completely block out our community from utilizing the facility, we allow Tuesdays and Thursday nights for rentals, for practices. Those are completely booked. So we're hosting six teams Tuesdays and Thursday nights throughout the summer, and then every other weekend we have an AAU tournament. I just received a request today for an additional from another organization, because they got blocked out of their, their gym. So I have to look to see, does this work for us? You know, we would love to host it. It's, it is revenue. However, we need to be really cautious that we're not overbooking. It's, that's really important, that we, that we are still having that open to the, to the kids. And it's Easter, we do have one this Saturday, but yes, AAU. And again, kind of what, what the mayor has asked me to do is go through, you know, where, where are we seeing that revenue? And so I'll be able to break that out by program and by facility, where that revenue is coming in. As, as you know, the, the revenue that we're seeing in the, in the rec side is continually to grow, but then you'll be able to see where is that really coming from. But yes, we do have revenue from AAU.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Planning and Zoning Administrator Strinasty with a request to expand GovPilot services. There's a memo in your packet and a supporting document that was attached.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. So I'm here to request that we expand the services for GovPilot. As some of you know, and a lot of you don't know, last summer, fall, we put in, in our request to contract with GovPilot, which is an online, cloud-based permitting software program. It allows us to digitally convert our processes to a digital format. So the board approved the Essential Five package, so it allowed us to get five modules. They cut us a, a break with a six module, and so we ended up getting the bids in RFP module, which allows people to submit their bids online, rather than submitting, or submitting hard copies and submitting sometimes hundreds of pages. Report of Concern, which has allowed the community to connect to us digitally, electronically through GovPilot, building permits, zoning permits, certificates of occupancy. And then we originally had business personal property as a module. However, when they were looking at formatting that module, the resources that would go into it were way beyond what they originally anticipated. So we ended up swapping that out with the sewer and water allocation permit module, which should be launching soon. And that one's going to be great, it's much more comprehensible for the public. With that, they also, you get a free mapping module and the inspection module, which we've taken full advantage of as well, because they couldn't service us with the business personal property module. They made a custom module, a seventh one, the DPW permits. So between building and zoning, it has really allowed us to streamline our application process by getting it all electronic. However, there's still more we could take advantage of, and we tried to put so much into these three modules for our office and two for DPW that we're not seeing its full potential, essentially. So the request that we have in collaboration with the mayor's office is to go for the unlimited version of GovPilot. That gives us unlimited modules and essentially allows us to digitize and electronic, every application into an electronic form. You know, some of the benefits to staff is it allows us to streamline our work processes, consolidates data entry in the one location, reduces duplicative data entry, eliminates handwritten forms and permits, and increases efficiency and output by staff. Just to give everyone an example, when I arrived in 2021, the building and zoning department had six different locations based on address. So if you really want to do a property search just within our own department, you had to go to six different filing cabinets, six different locations. You know, we've worked on consolidating that, but even moving forward, we would like to digitize a lot of that and just have it in one location, which GovPilot would allow us to do. In regards to benefits to the residents, it really gives them accessibility to us at all hours, rather than eight to four, when a lot of them might already be working, or just don't have the time when they're not working to get here. You know, allows them to pay the application fees digitally, rather than showing up with a check at our door. Again, they're eight to four business hours, and it just will hopefully result in more people filing for the permits, ones that just don't care to do so, because they don't have the ability to get here and fill it out. In conversing with GovPilot, they've said in dog licenses alone, municipalities typically see a 30 to 40% increase in people registering their ducks. So that's hopefully the output that we'll see by converting to the unlimited version. So getting down to the contract, the original contract was 30, or $21,600. GovPilot was graciously, was gracious enough to prorate the remainder of our first year. So rather than immediately jumping to the $86,580 a year, they'll prorate the rest of year one at $32,490. So for the first year, we'd pay $54,090. And then going into year two and three, it'd be $86,800, or $86,580 a year. I know it's a tall order, however, you know, our department alone thinks that we have the contract covered just by, in collaboration with implementing GovPilot, we also had our fee schedule, which the board passed in August of 2022. It went, it was effective as of January 1st, and just in the first quarter alone, which is one of our down periods of the year, we've collected about $21,000. So prorate that out for the remaining year, and that's about $82,400. So, you know, just in the fees that we've collected, which is all increased fees from what we had compared to last year. So we took whatever we calculated our old, whatever we calculated permits under our old fee schedule, we took the difference, and that's a net increase of $21,000. So on top of that, I know the mayor's gonna look at where else we can get potential revenue by looking at other places we could potentially get more non-tax revenue. So just as an example, zoning permits didn't even have a fee until just last year. So, so that's the summary. Any questions?
Alderwoman Toddio and Alderman McCann?
Well, I was gonna make a motion to suspend the rules, so if you can go next.
Are you making that motion?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman McCann?
I was just gonna make a comment. I appreciate you looking into this and bringing this to the board. I, I think that this functionality is fantastic. Decreasing the barriers to people paying their fees is, is great, but decreasing barriers to people finding the information that they need to do the right thing when it comes to permitting and applications, that's awesome. The report of concern button on the website and the app on our phone, I mean, I've used that. I don't know how much use it's actually getting, but the ease to, with which you can just report a non-emergency issue for the city to consider, I think it's is awesome. I mean, it probably brings a lot of extra email traffic to some of our department heads, but it also allows more people to be the eyes and ears of what the issues are out there on our sidewalks, on our streets around the city. So, thanks.
Alderman Cooperly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at this long list of adapt, adaptations that could be used.
Yep.
If we, if we do approve this, are these additional items that will be added to this GovOps?
Yeah, yep. So the list provided in the memo are essentially all the modules that we can take advantage of on top of more. They can custom make modules for us. So two examples, you know, as we look to start the capital improvement program, one of the hardest things to do is to have a reporting system, an internal reporting system to ourselves that's standardized across all the departments. They can design that for us so that each department can fill out, you know, what the asset is, how much money it's worth, so on and so forth. You have no...
Are there additional costs to implementing these different modules?
So when we go to the unlimited version, it's a standard $86. Yeah, yeah. So there's no extra cost.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to elaborate a little bit further on how we can maximize the potential efficiency of it, the zoning permit itself by state statute really covers a lot of different fields. You know, it covers new buildings, pools, additions, subdivision, boundary line adjustments. And it's hard to really capture those different workflows and processes in the one application. There's no real one through line between all of them, and they really need to be broken down into their separate modules. And it would, yeah, it would really increase the output and process.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Montorio.
I would move to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Rutland to enter into the subscription service order with GovPilot in substantially the form presented with an initial term ending October 1st, 2025, and an amount of $86,580 annually.
Second. All right. So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Does that motion cover what you're asking for, increasing the contract amount?
Yeah, so I did talk to Darny Blumer beforehand, and he helped me craft the memo or motion.
All right. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion? Alderman Gillum.
Just a concern here. It's a big jump here, and I'm trying to figure out in my head here what's actually in the 23 budget now, which ends in July, and then what is going to increase for next year, which we already approved for next year. So what would be the increase for next year's budget?
The increase for the fiscal year 2024 budget would be the $86,580.
Minus the $21,600 that is budgeted.
So that would be an increase of about $64,000-ish.
For the full fiscal year of '24, our fiscal year?
Yeah, it's an uncounted about $64,000. But, you know, as we, as I discussed earlier, I think our department alone can cover the cost just from the increase in non-tax revenues.
Mayor Dungus, did you have something to add?
So that was just a comment I was going to add, was that the goal of doing this is to actually capture all of those increased costs in the revenues that are generated. So even though it's not budgeted for, it will be paid for by the fees that are processed through the software. So that there'd be no, be actually probably a positive impact on our taxes.
I have, I have no problem with that because I understand the technology, and I've used it, and I understand where we need to go. We, we got to make things easier for taxpayers to get their permits in a one-stop shop. I'm just concerned the next budget cycle, when we get into it, we're going to want to flush this out. So fully understand how the impact is and how it's working.
Additional discussion? Seeing and hearing none. We have a motion. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next, we have Department of Public Works Commissioner Rotundo with a request for a resolution.
Ms. Mary. I'm taking it personally. (Laughter).
I apologize. Next, we have Treasurer Mark House.
Okay. I just have something very short tonight. What I sent to the board was the audit report, financial statements for the city for FY22. That was a lot of material, and I've asked, we'll get bound copies for everyone, so I hope you didn't try to print those. And we will invite our city auditor to come in, meet with finance committee, to really go through that. We have an unqualified audit opinion. That is what we want, so I feel really good about that. It just takes along for the audit. I mean, we're already into end of March, and we're just finishing. But anyway, so I would ask the board tonight to refer that financial statement audit report to committee for, for further review.
So moved.
Second. All right. So we have a motion to refer, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And for the public, we are working on uploading that to the website if anyone has interest. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Now we have Department of Public Works Commissioner Rotundo with a request for a resolution of support for two municipal highway grant applications. You should have received the memo and supporting documents in your packet.
Okay, so tonight I'm requesting a resolution of support for two V-Trans FY24 grant applications. Both of the complete applications are in your packet. The first one is for the road reconstruction on Park Street from Granger to railroad, to the railroad crossing. The estimated project cost is $209,000. On that project, it's a short little section of road, but there's concrete slabs under the road. We're going to remove the concrete slabs. We're going to remove the unsuitable clay materials underneath, and then we're going to reconstruct that section. For both of these grants, they're due on April 15th, and the maximum award is $175,000.
Alderman McCann?
Question or comment and then a question if I can. So the Hospital Brook culvert, I saw that there's the addition of a sidewalk on the north side. I appreciate that. I was looking at that site on the Google Street View, and there's a well-worn social trail in the narrow strip of grass there. So adding a sidewalk for pedestrian access on that side is great. For the Park Street project, it mentions that there's a current width of 22 and a half feet, and that's unsuitable for commercial or industrial traffic, so you wanted to widen it to 25 feet. What is the commercial or industrial traffic that has been prevented from using that? Or what damage to the infrastructure has the commercial or industrial traffic caused because it's only 22 and a half feet?
Well, I mean, anytime, I'll just speak to that in general. I mean, anytime we do these projects, we try to improve them. So, you know, we look at the dimensions, we look at the codes, and then we try to follow the new codes. You know, as you said, I mean, we looked at, at the culvert on Allen Street, and we said, we really need a sidewalk on the other side. Let's go ahead and extend that culvert. So that's really what we do with all these, with all these projects.
Yeah, I was just thinking with that, the therapy pool there, that I get the sense is having more use now with the partnership with the rec department. You know, there's additional, you know, foot traffic there either from the parking lot across the street or potentially from the neighborhood across the street. So, yeah, just thinking about, you know, it's an extra two and a half feet. Doesn't sound like a lot, but if it makes it look bigger, wider to drivers, and they potentially go faster, that's an issue. And then I was also wondering, there's the sidewalk that comes in from Granger that doesn't have its own dedicated crosswalk there. You have to kind of cross Granger and then cross Park. I don't know if it's possible to kind of do all three there to shorten the trip across the road there.
Again, you know, we'll look at that once we, if we get this award, we'll go ahead and we'll take a look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The one thing I do want to add, though, too, is both of these projects, and I was just talking about the Park Street one first, is that they are going to take place. I mean, Park Street is going to be built this year. We have, we have bond money for that, okay? But any grants that we get, obviously, we will have to borrow less money. So that's going to apply to both of these projects. Okay?
Nice. Alderwoman McClure and then Alderman Gillum.
Thank you. Commissioner Rotundo, thank you very much for being here tonight. I just wanted to confirm something before I lead into my next question, although I think Alderman McCann confirmed it for me. This is the street that VAC, the Mitchell Therapy Pool, is located on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So leading into that, then, I have had multiple members of the community, both staff at VAC and parents of students at VAC, reach out to me regarding safety crossing the road on that specific strip of Park Street. Would this road reconstruction project also include repainting crosswalks and an upgrade of the pedestrian infrastructure, in this case being sidewalk beepers, lights, something like that on that street, especially in the case of expanding the road, making it wider? And much like Alderman McCann said, people, when they see wider roads, tend to go faster. This is a school zone that already has members of the community feeling unsafe. What measures will be taken to ensure both student and staff safety on this specific street?
Yeah, you know, this would, this would be a complete redo of that section of street. So there's going to be new pavement markings, everything that goes along with that. New crosswalks, we really discuss at Traffic Safety in the Traffic Safety Committee. So I think before we start adding new crosswalks, we would actually have a conversation in that committee, and then we would evaluate it, and we'd make a decision from there.
Okay. In the case of specifically the technology of the crosswalk, so the sidewalk beepers themselves, I don't know the technical term for them. I've always heard them called the beepers. Is that a Department of Public Works issue, or who manages those specific beepers for the crosswalks?
Well, we manage that.
Okay.
DPW manages them. You got to understand that those are expensive. These are the solar, you know, crosswalks, the push buttons, and then you get the flashing beacons, the rectangular flashing beacons. We're going to be installing one on West Street at the multimodal this year, this summer. But, you know, we're also very careful about not putting too many around the city. I mean, it's really got to be warranted with enough pedestrian traffic because there's a, you know, there's a, you could also have too many of those, and then people just don't pay attention at all. But we will evaluate all of that as part of this project. And then if, as I said, if we're going to, if we're going to put a new crosswalk in or try to upgrade an existing crosswalk, we would, we would have a discussion in the Traffic Safety Committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alderman Gillum?
Move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight.
All right. So we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Barba Gallo.
I had one question, Jim. With the widening of the road from 22 to 25 feet, are the above-ground utilities set back far enough that they will not be affected, or will they have to be pushed back also?
No, there's actually utility work involved, so that's part of the project.
Okay. Do you anticipate that you'll be able to get the right of ways and everything without any trouble?
We already have all those.
You have? Okay.
So for, for the Allen Street culvert, you know, that's already been awarded to the Belden Company. And that, as I said, that construction is going to be starting soon. It's going to be starting in May. But, you know, we've got to move water. We've got to do some, or they have to. They've got to do some sewer work. They've got to do some water work. But that's all part of this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Alderman Gillum?
Yes. You want approval for a signature on this, or you need approval to apply?
Yeah, there's an original, there's an original resolution that Tracy has for each of the projects.
So, all right, okay.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve a resolution of support for the application of FY24 Municipal Highway Class II Roadway Grant Program for the reconstruction of 615 linear feet of Park Street and to circulate for signatures.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Alderman Gillum?
Mr. President, I just, not trying to tell you what the rules are, but we seem to be moving away from our rules. We need to put a motion on the floor first before we start asking questions or debating the issue. So just for thought down the road, we need to get the motion on the floor. Then we can start asking questions.
Thank you for the reminder. All right. Any discussion or debate now that we do have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I believe Commissioner Rotundo, you have another?
Okay, so that was just for the Park Street, correct? Okay. So the next one, again, this is a $175,000 grant that we're applying for, and this is for the Allen Street culvert, okay? And this is over Hospital Brook. And that project's been awarded to Belden Company. The cost is $844,925. And again, if we receive any money for that grant, that'll reduce the amount that we need to take. We had a bond, a structures bond in 2019 that was worth $3 million, and then the voters passed the additional one and a half million in bond article number one. So if we receive any monies, if we receive any part of that grant, it'll reduce the amount we need to borrow from those bonds.
Move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Okay, I'd like to move to circulate for signatures for the FY24 Municipal Highway Structures Grant Program Application for Replacement of Allen Street Number 20 Culvert over Hospital Brook. And I say move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the resolution, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. And I think we have Commissioner Rotundo again.
Okay, so I'm requesting the board to grant the city engineer authorization to issue an RFP for engineering design services to replace, install, or extend water mains and related appurtenances within the city's water distribution system, approved by the voters. And this is the bond article two that was recently approved in the March 7th election. So basically, we want to move that ahead now. We want to go ahead and send out an RFP, select a design engineer to go ahead and start designing all of the pipe segments that, actually, we had listed them in a table you should have in your packet. The, and actually, all of those projects come out to be about $4 million. We know we can't construct them all, but at this point, we want to get all the designs done. And then, once the designs are done, we'll go ahead and decide from this list, based upon the new engineer's estimate, what we can do for two and a half million. And then we go ahead and select those and construct. So at this point, we just want to go ahead and send an RFP out to get the design work started.
Motion to suspend the rules?
There. Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And motion to grant the city engineer authorization to issue an RFP for engineering design services to replace, install, or extend water mains and related appurtenances within the city's water distribution system approved by the voters in the March 7th, 2023 election.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Next, I have two requests related to appointments of representatives. The first is to certify the appointment of Mayor Dungus as the regular commissioner to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And myself, as the alternate commissioner, approval of these appointments is required by this board, by the RRPC. So I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments and allow the board president to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. The second is to certify the appointment of Alderwoman McClure as the regular representative to the Rutland Regional Transportation Advisory Committee, and Alderman Gillum as the alternate representative. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sustaining. I can't vote for myself.
All right. Very good. I would entertain a motion to approve these, sorry. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments and allow the board president to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
You abstain?
Yeah, because we can't vote for ourselves.
All right. Motion passes.
Yes.
Abstain is the word I wanted.
Next, we have reports of standing committees, which we have none; reports of representatives, which we have none; reports of select committees, which we have none; petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. communications. We have three special event permits. The first are for Art in the Park events. The applications and supporting documents were included in your packet.
Move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve both of them for August and October.
You want to do both together?
Yeah, we might as well.
No, that's all right.
All right. So Alderman Gillum has made a motion to approve both Art in the Park special event permit requests for August 12th and 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Main Street Park, and October 7th and 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Main Street Park. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Barba Gallo, and then Alderman McCann?
Okay, I'm sorry. The, there's a question I have on these permits because back at a recreational meeting in the previous administration, we were talking about the reconstruction of the Gizebo in the park. And that come, this work will probably be done in the fall, which would make the city park not available for Art in the Park. I asked what their alternative plan was, and there it was to move it down to, I believe, either the park where the Ethan Allen Monument is, or the one where the Vietnam Memorial Monument is. Would that permit cover these additional parks, or would they need to reapply?
Attorney Blumer?
I have not reviewed the permits for that purpose, so I can't give you an opinion about that. It's the Main Street Park, which I guess all that's Main Street Park, or?
So it's been pointed out that Superintendent Peters did sign off on both of them. So she would, she would...
Okay. Well, I, I do have some concerns if it is moved down to where the Vietnam Memorial is. That there are traffic issues down there that we do not have up at the Main Street Park. There's parking issues down there that we do not have down there. And safety issues, I believe, because you have the full road that runs behind that park, which is two-way traffic. And that's going to be congested with vendor vehicles and everything else. And something's going to need to be done there to correct the traffic, either make it one-way or seal it off, which requires DPW, police. And I think the businesses, that being Clifford's Funeral Home needs to be notified, and Christ the King School, because the odds are, with it being down at that end of town, people are going to try and park there. And if there's an event going on at Christ the King, be it masses or a wedding or a funeral, that parking lot may not be available. And the same thing with Clifford's. If there's a funeral or a wake going on there, parking is going to be more of a problem down there. And I think it should possibly be referred to committee so that this can be discussed.
Alderman McCann? So with that suggestion, asking process-wise, there was a motion to approve both of them, would this be an amendment to that motion to separate them out, or?
Let me look at my order of operations. So if we've approved the motion, the motion has been made and been seconded.
Been seconded.
This be an amendment?
Let's draw.
We have to vote on this before referring?
Well, the easier, easier answer would be if the, if the maker of the motion would withdraw his motion. But if he doesn't want to, then you could, well, I think, I think the motion to refer does take precedent.
Okay. So do we just leave the other motion hanging there and look for a second to the motion to refer? All right, so Alderman Barba Gallo has made a motion to refer?
Point of awareness, Mr. President?
Yep.
Just to answer his question, I think we should approve the events and then send the committee, the safety committee, the issue of parking and those other issues to deal with that.
All right, and then?
The way you can bring the chief in, the public, the public works.
And invite the management of Chaffee Art Gallery and everything?
Yep.
That works for me.
Attorney Blumer?
If I may, just going back to the first question that you asked, Joe, I, I do think if you approve the permits, that they have permission to go forward anywhere in Main Street. I mean, you could probably rescind it between now and then. But logically, you may, if you're going to have a committee meeting, you may want to hold on.
It's just, my concern is safety, because with traffic running on both sides of that, I can see somebody getting hit there. And I just don't want to see a problem. I don't want to see the city on the hook for a liability issue down there. It's, it's a new dynamic venture down there that needs to be addressed before we actually let them go and do it there. I'm, I'm all for supporting Art in the Park. I want to see it happen, but I want to see it happen safely.
Very good. But you're comfortable withdrawing your motion at this time?
If that's what it's going to take, yes. But I, I would rather see the motion to approve withdrawn. It's, it's up to you, Bill, you know. You know, it's going to get done. We've got plenty of time.
I just don't want to start something with Arts and Parks. We've been down this road with the Chaffee. It got all political and it got really bad. I don't want that to happen again. I think we should approve it and then invite them in pending the department head sign off on a plan when they do move it down to the other end.
So it looks like there's a note on the permit. What does it say exactly? I couldn't quite read the handwriting, but?
If police services are requested to contact patrol commander and they put the phone number there. So if they do need help.
Can the amendment be amended to include a plan by the Chaffee Art Gallery if indeed the venue is moved down to one of the other two parks? That way they have to come back with a plan, and if they don't, then we can rescind it.
So are you asking that the original motion be amended to include that?
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay. Is the secondor okay with that? I can't remember who the secondor was.
I'll second it.
All right, so Alderman Gillum, your motion was to approve both permits at once, and the amendment is, we need to vote on the amendment, right?
Yes.
Yes, first, yes.
So we have an amendment to the permit approval motion to require the Chaffee to produce a contingency plan to address parking and safety if it's moved?
With the Department of Rec. I mean, they need to be involved.
With the Department of Rec, yes.
Collaboration with the Department of Rec, and that, that amendment has been seconded. Any discussion or debate of the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. So now Alderman Gillum made a motion, and Alderman Kupali seconded to approve both permits together. The amendment has been?
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion or debate of the motion as amended?
Very good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amended motion passes.
They handle that very well.
Are you sure about that? All right, the next one was the special event permit request that was added to the agenda, and I do not have copies, so I'm going to read it all to you.
Thank you.
The event title is "An Electrifying Afternoon." The date of the event is April 27th, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Description: An event to be held inside the Paramount will be supported by all electric vehicles parked on Center Street. Location of event: Center Street between Merchants Row and Wales Street. Contact: Sameson of Vermont. And it includes their contact information. Use of city streets or sidewalks requested? Yes. Street closing requested? Yes. And if we move on, it has signatures from the Police Department, the Public Works Department, the Fire Department, and the city attorney. And then additional information, what is the general nature, how many people are expected to attend this event? 300. No entertainers. The price of admission is free. The general nature or purpose of the event: An event celebrating all things solar, held inside the Paramount. Center Street will be populated entirely with electric vehicles. What arrangements have been made for traffic control? We are only looking from the street to be closed to traffic so that we can park electric vehicles in the parking spots. Street passage will not be impeded. Looks like nothing additional. They have their certificate of liability insurance. And you can pass that in, if anybody wants to look at it.
I move to suspend the rules to take the...
Second.
All right.
Whatever.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderwoman McClure?
Thank you. I unfortunately, in this case, have to abstain from voting as I am employed by Sameson of Vermont, and I will be present at the event, being paid while I am there. So I am abstaining from voting. Am I permitted to share just a touch of information about the event permit?
Sure.
The event itself, well, the permit is from 2:00 to 6:00. The event itself is from 4:00 to 6:00. The 2:00 to 6:00 is just so we have time to set up the street. But the event itself is from 4:00 to 6:00.
Appreciate the additional info. Chief?
So I did make a note on that, again, because I wasn't sure what other conversations had taken place. But the request to basically close the street and then park electric cars in the parking spots might be problematic. I think you said the setup starts at 2:00?
The setup would begin at 2:00 p.m., yes.
All right, so, and it's during the week, right?
Yes, sir, it's a Thursday.
So, yeah, that might be problematic. As I said, I don't know what other conversations have taken place. But we would, again, we'd have to somehow clear the street. If we were to prove it as, as, as requested, we'd somehow have to clear the street and then close the street so no one else came in, and then allowed the cars to park from 4:00 to 6:00, which is a period where parking, it was still paid parking. So again, all those things are considered. As I said, I wasn't sure what other conversations had taken place with anyone on the board or any other, any city department. But I made that point on, on there, I think, to contact Commander Proudey for discussion on, on parking. So those were the, that's why I put that.
I appreciate the additional info. Alderman Gillum?
I should wait until we get the motion on the floor, then I'll ask him questions.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Vote for approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And it has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gillum?
Is there a way we can get the big sign at the end of the street to warn people they can't park? So when they come to work, they know we're going to be moving cars, like we've done before for some other events. Public Works put a little flashing sign?
We do have the signboard. The signboard that we have is not really designed for, for an area like that. It's, it's a, it's a large sign, and it's meant for roads of higher speed.
Oh, okay.
Where you, where you see it from, from a, from a greater distance, come upon it quickly. And when you're, when you're real close to it, it's, it's hard to read.
Oh, okay. Like the ones we used for the parade down South Main Street? You can't use that one?
I'm not, I believe that is the DPW one. But again, it's, well, actually, I think it's maintained by DPW. I think it's actually ours, but we let them, we let them play with it.
So my concern, Mr. President, is that we warn the, the employees coming into work that morning that somehow we have to have signage out there to tell people we're closing the streets down at such and such time.
Alderman Kupali?
Does, does, or will it in any way affect delivery trucks for local restaurants, et cetera? You know, they deliver most of the day. I'm wondering how that's going to be handled.
Well, you know, similar to the, I guess we can look at it and, and deal with it similar to how we deal with Friday Night Live?
Right.
Where I think it is about 4:00, or maybe even earlier. We do allow parking earlier in the day, but at some point, we do close the street. But again, as I said, this is sort of unexpected, that this, this was a sort of a unique request. And as I said, because it was so unique, I had, I almost thought that there was some conversation that had taken place before this was put in. But it doesn't, doesn't appear to be the case.
Alderman McCann?
So if the streets close down, what, what do we have there to denote that it's closed? I mean, do we put concrete barriers in, or are they wooden barriers?
So, again, with Friday, Friday Night Live, we put, on the kiosks, we put signs, like posters, I think, that we basically tape on the kiosks, that the street will be closed at a, at a particular time. And then at some point, the barricades would be placed.
But what are the barricades? Are they wooden?
Yes.
Okay, so they, I mean, they, they could be moved to drive the event cars in, and then, so is the, is the problem the, just the logistics of that, or the visual of we close the street, but now there are cars on it?
No, it's the logistics of it, really. As I said, I wasn't sure if that conversation had taken place already. And if it had taken place, you know, we weren't involved.
Got you. All right, so we have a motion to approve that has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Alderwoman?
Do we need an amendment to say something about the plan for closing off the street?
Well, again, if you're asking me, I did make, make a note of it, sort of, that, to discuss it, just, because the request was to, you know, it was pretty, pretty clear what the request is. And I did put to contact a patrol commander for, what did I exactly say, Tracy?
Contact Commander Proudey to discuss Center Street parking issues. And you put his phone number.
Right. So, again, it's, yeah, I, you know, I think that's covered. But as I said, I wanted to raise it just in case someone else had conversation, to figure out what sort of promises were made and what conversations took place. But it is something we can do.
Alderman Gillum?
I just want people at home to say, this is not a problem. We just got to work it out. Because we want Center Street in the future to be used as an event space. That's the whole point of all this. And we do have some things that are in standard place. So when you're coming down Merchants Row, going north, there's no right turn. You're coming from the other way, there's no left turn. Those signs are already in place, and then they block both the ends. The key is, is to advertise with the partnership. So the business people know, like we do with the parade, we put letters out to all the folks saying, we're closing the streets down, it's such and such, and then the parade starts such and such. So the communication piece just has to happen, that's all.
Alderwoman McClure?
I just wanted to throw out here, just because I've been involved very minimally with the event process of the, the permit. There has been some discussion with the downtown partnership regarding the event. Nothing incredible depth, as they were at a conference last week. So we weren't able to get in touch with them in the ways that we wanted to, because they were at a conference. But they have been, there has been discussion. They are aware the event will be forthcoming, and they are more than happy to help us with information distribution.
Yeah, because they can, they can email all the businesses very quickly.
So knowing that there is a note on the permit for Sameson to contact Commander Proudey about parking and traffic, and with this additional information, are we comfortable with the motion to approve as is, or do we want an amendment? Any further discussion or debate? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of approving the special event permit?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Alderman McClure abstained.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Seeing and hearing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Gillum?
Yes, I'd like to put into motion here, because the future is going to be coming very quickly. And as you heard, the Superintendent of Rec, when we bring major events to this town, we're having some major problems with hotel rooms. I've had a lot of people who've come here for events, and they're going as far as over to the lake, New York State, on the other side of the line. So I would like to send to the intermunicipal committee so we can sit down with Rutland Town, and sit down with the hotels on the southern end of the city, which is in the city, and Rutland Town, and come up with a plan so when they evacuate, the homeless people are evacuated, we have a plan in place that those hotels are going to come back up and running. And, and we have some hotel space for the future. I do not want to see those properties sitting for a whole year before they do something. I think the local government needs to get involved and sit down with them right away and come up with a plan on what they're going to do. So move.
All right, so Alderman Gillum has made a motion to refer discussion of future plans for the hotels that are currently housing homeless Vermonters to intermunicipal.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? Mayor Dungus?
So there used to be, Mark, there's a, there's a hotel meeting, it's the first Friday of every month. We've moved it to the second Friday. Intermunicipal is welcome to send a representative if they want, or if we warn the meeting, they can come as a whole. But I think that there's, there's a value to having said anything.
I think, if I could, Mary Ashcroft has talked to me at a Rotary meeting, and that was a big concern of hers. I said, yeah, we can work together on that, it's no problem. I don't know if you had that conversation with her?
Yeah.
So I think we need to put a little local pressure, because I don't want, because I have worked with those people, so I know if we don't put a slight nice touch to them that we want something to happen after the folks are not using the hotel anymore, that they do come back online some way. Because we're losing the 1%. We're losing, you know, other things too. And Rutland Town is also losing a major amount of money. So if we can stimulate them and help them to get back online, that'd be great.
So that wasn't clear to me. So there's been a motion to refer to intermunicipal, but Mayor Dungus says those conversations are already happening?
Right. We would, we would be invited to go to that.
Okay. So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any further discussion or debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderwoman McClure?
Thank you very much. I'm, we no longer have an IT committee. I just want to confirm that. Okay. My question, new business here is, we, as we don't have an IT committee, who would we refer to regarding matters of telecommunications here within the chamber for board members who aren't able to be present physically during a board meeting? What committee would we refer that to, or who would we refer that to? What committee would we refer that to or who would we refer that to?
Are you talking specifically about technology to support that or are you talking about sort of rules?
Technology to support it primarily. I notice here we have a, a lack of webcams, internet capabilities of being able to communicate specifically. But I was just wondering.
Can you step to the podium and address this?
Absolutely. So in the prior, with the prior Alderman group, there was a, a set of motions to fund technology upgrades specifically for this chamber. That motion had passed. There are three RFPs waiting to go out to address that specifically. Before those RFPs go out, actually, I'm pointing at Rich Onniki here from Peg TV, who's running the cameras tonight. Peg TV is actually going to come in and do an upgrade of their equipment in these chambers that include cameras to film that'll be more permanently located. Those will be able to tie into the new system. And then once that's installed, we'll send out the technology RFP, which I have to finish crafting with Sarah Margot. The other two RFPs are for an HVAC system that will allow us to keep this room more and more cool when it is, when it is summer or winter, so to speak, but quietly, right? The air conditioner is really loud. And then the third one is for sound treatment in the way of carpeting, right? So the first, that, that technology RFP has sound treatment in the way of wall, wall components. We waited on the third RFP to see if the wall components would be enough. But just because of how large and solid the objects are in this room, carpeting may be necessary. So we're going to wait to see if that happens. So that's the process that we're under right now. I hope that within the next two months, those RFPs have been responded to and, and we're on the path to, to moving that forward. Any other questions on that?
Thank you, Mayor Dungus.
Okay.
Alderman Gillum.
Have we put a motion on the floor?
No.
No more, okay.
So is this, because I'm so new, is this a situation in which I would make a motion to a general committee to bring up this discussion? Or as Mayor Dungus said, as it's already being handled, is it just something I brought?
That's entirely up to you. If you're comfortable that the mayor's office is leading on this and it's progressing, I think we can leave it there. But if you want to have it in committee so that the board can discuss it, you can refer it to the committee of this board's choosing.
I don't feel that a motion would be necessary in this case.
Point of order, Mr. President. To do that, to have a meeting and, and members are not present, we need to do a rule change. Am I correct?
What was the question, Bill?
If a member is not here and they can come in by internet or Zoom, whatever, we have to do a rule change in our rules. Am I correct?
I have to look closely. I think for at least a period of time, it's allowed by state law. And I'm not sure that the rules are, I think they're silent on, on that, on that matter, but maybe the mayor has a thought.
Mayor Dungus.
So from a rule standpoint, that's a great point. That actually was referred to the general committee last year as well. So the way that our board rules are written is we follow our board rules, then we follow Robert's Rules, most current version. Robert's Rules, most current version has three ways that we can choose to do hybrid meetings. And we have to actually go to, schedule a, a general committee meeting and then choose one of those three ways that we choose to do those.
Thank you. Alderman Kupali?
Do the Aldermen need to be present to vote? Or can they?
That's part of the rule change.
Yeah.
But I think that's part of what we need to discuss. There's three options outlaid in Robert's Rules and we need to choose which one best suits this board.
Right.
So that sits in general right now.
My fear is, my fear, that some of us might not even show up at all. And I think it needs to be a dual thing where, like, poor Sharon can't be here because her husband's in the hospital, where she could attend because she has a reason why she's not here. And then our, our friend here who's having a medical issue. Absolutely.
I, these are great points, but I think we should discuss these in general committee because it's been referred there.
So it's in general committee.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions on that item? Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business? Alderman McCann.
A, a little one for me, related to the special event permit applications. So I, I know it's kind of been discussed before, but approving the applications when they're missing signatures. I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to change the form so that when we vote to approve the board president to sign it, you can indicate whether or not all the signatures had been gathered by the time you signed it. And if not, you're signing it sort of contingent upon collection of the rest of those signatures because then you're not putting yourself into a liable position of signing off before other thing, people have signed. And it sounds like we've just kind of done that kind of colloquially or whatever the word would be, you know, we, we just kind of let it happen. So would there be a way to clean up that form that gives you kind of the ability or the?
I think there's the, the ability to make a motion where, you know, final approval is contingent on something happening, but there's also the ability to make changes to the form. Mayor Dungus again.
Sorry. Yeah, so, that's exactly right. Andrew is holding up the, the GovPilot software. So what we can do, the SEP permit is probably going to be on the top of the list, honestly. It's become the hot topic recently and what we can do is we can digitize the entire thing. So whether you want to fill out paper and then we go fill it out digitally for you or you want to fill it out digitally, the idea basically being that then that will go off to all the right departments. It will come back from all the right departments. And then it doesn't get final approval until everything is complete. So that removes all the ambiguity and confusion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Gillum.
So our, so our new members know how it was done before. Before the poor person putting the permit, would have to go to every department head, walk it. Well, this new system is going to eliminate that and be more customer service. So they come in at the front end, file the permit, and then all the department heads get it at the same time. I'm all in favor of that because a lot of, because I've done a parade committee and I know what it's like to push that permit through. Not against the department heads, but you got to chase them down because they're working, so they're doing other things. So this will streamline that.
These are all signed. All three of them were signed by everybody.
So the ones we approved tonight were all signed. They had all of the appropriate signatures.
Okay, or I would have mentioned it.
Okay. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions or new business? Seeing and hearing none. I'll ask Attorney Blumer to read the necessary motions for us to move into executive session.
Hold on one moment. I've got chief's scrip sheet here somewhere. Okay. I think I've got it. Motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of labor relations agreements would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated.
We need a motion to move it.
Would someone move that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the police chief, mayor, treasurer, clerk and city attorney to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1b.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We're now moving into executive session.